Okay, it's a little bit before seven, but are we on?
Yeah, we're ready to go.
Okay, it's time to begin the regularly scheduled Baxter City Council meeting. Welcome you if you're watching by Zoom. And first thing we will do is, what is the first thing we'll do?
Roll call.
We're gonna do the roll call. My screen slipped on me there. Go ahead.
Cross.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Abbott.
Here.
DCO.
Here.
Wilson.
Here. This time I'd ask you to rise where you are to recite the question. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one under God.
With liberty and justice for all.
Anybody else see the mayor?
I see someone frozen with their hand on the heart and I see flags. And I see Todd. Holman. That's it.
What I see. Todd, you're the host now. You need to unmute.
I think they were abducted by aliens. That was my theory. Wait and see if they're transported back. Strange feeling though. We're all in disparate locations. Nobody knows if anybody's doing anything. There's nobody to look, nowhere to go, nobody to ask. You're on mute, Connie.
Said, welcome to my world almost every day. I'll buy myself up at the store in Nisswa and nobody to help me.
Where's your lifeline, right?
Yeah, exactly. I'm pretty proud though. There's been a few technology fails and I figured it out on my own.
That is good.
It is good, yeah.
We changed out the router in our house and upgraded to a bigger, better. I don't even know how to describe what bigger, better is, but everything, every device had to change to accept the new router. So that was a little bit of technical flurry in our house. So it's getting phones and TVs and even the wireless printer all had to kind of lock into the new.
Oh, no, thank you.
Just makes you aware of how dependent we are on. You know, and you don't think about it, but all these pieces of technology kind of creep in and become like breathing. The only thing that seems to be reliable and constant is the lawnmower. That hasn't changed, you know, in a hundred years, at least for me. Same old in gas.
So I take it you have to have a push mower?
No, it's, it's a remnant rider. I don't need a riding mower here in town, but when I used to live on a farm, it was critical. But it's been with me for probably thirty plus years now.
There he is.
Still running.
I can honestly say in thirty plus years of marriage, I've mowed our lawn one time.
Jeez.
Not in my wheelhouse. I do the painting. I unclog the toilets. I do a lot of stuff. Mowing is not one.
A division of, division of tasks is, is good for clarity, you know?
Yeah.
Were you good at it?
Uh, no, and I think I did poorly on purpose. So I wasn't asked to do it again.
Where all my little saplings go?
I've also found if I look sad enough and inept enough, my neighbor would have stepped up too.
That hard.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have the same riding lawnmower from twenty-five years ago.
Yeah.
Twenty-five or more.
Boy, not us. I don't know what's wrong.
Well, when you live in sand, you only mow four times a year.
Used to till it rained three inches a week or whatever.
Gee, no kidding.
Now it gets so hot, just quits growing.
Speaking of, do you know, do we get any phone calls or messages from folks with flooded basements? Anybody?
No.
It's been pretty quiet. I had water in my basement, but.
No flooded basements, but lot of flooding of yards and stuff. I've had many calls.
Okay.
And we were out pumping, pumping over on Cypress on Saturday afternoon, Saturday night and Sunday morning.
I'm kind of bored. Just mentioned they're having trouble with the internet at City Hall right now.
Oh, okay.
So, oh, he's calling me. I'm gonna mute here.
Now Trevor, nothing gives me greater joy than to drive down Excelsior and see the water off the road and into those apartments on Greenwood Road and see no water flooding the garages. And I know that's kind of wonky, but a lot of work has gone in to fix those things, so.
We, we have fixed a lot of problems. Of course, we're just not fixing them fast enough for some neighborhoods.
Sure.
But we've, we have fixed a lot over the years.
Well.
But I can't, I can't believe how these rains intensify.
Oh, no kidding. The poor YMCA really got pounded, it sounds like.
We did have, the other thing is we did have some trees down. We've been out cleaning trees up too.
Oh, really? Where were they down?
We had tree down on, was it Mary Street? Um, Inglewood. We got one on Oakwood right now by Camp Bonacic. Yet it's not on the street, but it's almost to the edge. Trying to think of where else. Several places. We've cleaned up about a dozen already.
Trevor, how have groundwater levels been? I'm thinking north Inglewood, east side of Inglewood, north of Clearwater, that area. What's, what's the status of that? Is it?
It had, you know, had went down a lot since the spring and now it's coming right back up again.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of, yeah.
It's not good. We're getting everything put together so we can go talk to Waldemarsons, to Dunlop Waldemarson, to Transines. We gotta get those easements in place and get that rest of that drainage done.
Yeah, it's just one last little stretch to Clearwater is what we've got to do, right?
One final ditch in there. And then we found one, that ditch is already filled in by the USDA building. We're gonna have to go. That's already built up one foot in the last twenty years.
Just from sediment?
Yep, just from sediment and from growth, you know, from grass and leaves and brush and, you know, stuff that just. I can't believe it's growing a foot, but that's what it shows on the survey. So we need to go cut a foot and Steve Keepers bought that piece of property. Well, we gotta go deal with Steve.
I thought you were gonna tell me beavers were taking over the section stormwater plant.
We have beavers in the old golf course right now that we're dealing with.
Yeah.
They're not in the arboretum as of currently, so.
For now, right?
They will be. We took three, three already out of Mile Lake last month.
So I saw Brad, so it looked like there was a shot that the internet was coming back.
We're back, I think.
Oh, you are? Yay.
A lot of people scurrying around here trying to. Sorry about that. Seems to me like we need to get back in the bill, in the building here. I don't know. Last I saw, we were doing the pledge, so I don't know where, where you guys are. Did you carry on?
Oh, wait a minute. You're in the building and you're the one having problems.
No, Brad just came back on too.
Yes, we finished the pledge.
Yeah, we did not move on. We paused.
Alrighty. Well, let's, uh, let's move on then. Brad, were there any additions or corrections?
Uh, there's no additions or corrections, but just want to provide one clarification. The RFP that's included in consent item P or six P has been revised to include language under task three feasibility study to include a task that was inadvertently omitted in the original RFP. That task is to evaluate each street segment based on the bicycle and pedestrian policy study and to present multiple different cross-sections of each segment with cost estimates. So the online version of the agenda does have the updated R. I just wanted to provide that clarification for all that are attending.
Okay, thank you. And again, our apologies to those that have been waiting patiently for us to move forward here. Here we go. Number six, a consent agenda. The following items are considered non-controversial by staff and are recommended to be read and passed in one motion. Any councilperson, staff, citizen, or meeting attendee can request one or more items be pulled from the consent agenda. The item will be pulled and addressed immediately after the passage of the consent agenda. Otherwise, the following items will, will be passed in one motion. A approved city council minutes from July seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. The approved the payment of bills and finance report. See except utilities commission minutes from July eighth, two thousand and twenty. The approved final acceptance of the Bradford Northwoods Development LLC as per the development agreement and release the irrevocable letter of credit number four zero 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 two four seven five two. He approved GM Contracting Inc. Final Pay Estimate number four in the amount of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-one cents for the two thousand and eighteen lift station number three reroute improvements project. F approved the RL Larson excavating change order number two in the amount of thirty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and ten cents for the two thousand and twenty South Sanitary Sewer Interceptor, North Forest Field Improvements and North Forest View Stormwater Outfall Improvements Project. G approved partial pay estimate number two in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents to RL Larson Excavating for the two thousand and twenty South Sanitary Sewer Interceptor, North Forest View Improvements, North Forest View Stormwater Outfall Improvements Project. H approved Anderson Brothers Construction Change Order number one in the amount of thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-nine cents for contract changes on the two thousand and twenty Fairview Road Golf Course Drive, Excelsior Road and Trail Connection and the two thousand and twenty Oakwood Drive Trail Connection Improvements Project. I approve Anderson Brothers Construction Partial Pay Estimate number three in the amount of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and five dollars and sixty-nine cents for the two thousand and twenty Fairview Road Golf Course Drive, Excelsior Road and Trail Connection and two thousand and twenty Oakwood Drive Trail Connection Improvements Project. J approved the Knife River Corporation North Central Change Order number eleven, amending the contract completion dates as shown in the change order attachment for the two thousand and nineteen full depth reclamation improvements and the two thousand and nineteen memory would drive improvements project. K approved the knife, excuse me, the Knife River Corporation North Central Pay Estimate number ten in the amount of seven hundred and four thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-five cents for the two thousand and nineteen in full depth reclamation improvements that would drive improvements project. L approved the JR Furchie Incorporated Pay Estimate number eight in the amount of sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy cents for the two thousand and nineteen Mapleton Road Jasperwood Drive and NOLA Drive Area Improvements Municipal Project number four one two nine and two thousand and nineteen South Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Improvements. AMADOP Resolution two thousand and twenty dash zero four three for no parking on Whispering Woods Lane. And delay response to Crow Wing County Highway Department to allow many feasibility study for sanitary sewer and water for wider road from Inglewood Drive to Garrett Lane. O adopt two thousand and twenty-one budget calendar. P authorized city staff to seek, to seek requests for proposals for engineering services for two thousand and twenty-one mill and overlay full depth reclamation reconstruction improvements projects. Q, adopt resolution two thousand and twenty dash zero four two approving a variance to allow a sixty-five foot setback to a paver patio fire pit from the ordinary high watermark of perch lake for property located at one two nine eight eight NOLA Drive requested by Joel Stackling of twelve nine eight eight NOLA Drive Baxter. Our approved resolution, a relevant resolution two thousand and twenty dash zero four one approving a conditional use permit to allow accessory structure area to deviate from the area requirements established in the city code for property located at five seven four seven Clearwater Road. Requested by Beater Construction, forty-seven oh six Wilderness Court, Brainerd, Minnesota. Yes, adopt resolution two thousand and twenty dash zero four zero approving a conditional use permit for grading and filling the shoreline overland district to allow the installation of riprap erosion barrier located at one four three seven zero Shoreview Drive. Requested by Brad Spry, one four three seven zero Sherwood Drive in Baxter. T accept planning and zoning commission minutes from July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Motion to accrue the consent agenda.
Motion by Mark.
Second.
Second by Todd, I think. Roll call.
You're muted. Brad, you're muted. Yes.
Holman.
Uh, yes, but I think the motion was Zach on that one.
The second.
The second, I'm sorry.
The Holman was yes.
Yes.
DCO.
Yes.
Abbott.
Yes, and I was the second.
Olson.
Yes. Okay, thank you. We move on to number eight, other business. Eight A, adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash zero zero six, twenty twenty dash zero zero seven resolution twenty twenty dash three zero three six approving ordinance amendment option B adopting ordinance or zoning ordinance text amendments throughout title ten of the Baxter City Code as it pertains to chickens, fencing, and accessory structures, lot coverage, and related areas. I've asked Mr. Doty to, to break these down and take them, take them separately. I realize they're all under the same area in our, in our ordinances, but I think at the, at the P and Z meeting, it got, it got a little bit convoluted with, you know, trying to touch them all and, yeah, at the same time. So we'll take them one at a time and hear the, hear the report and then vote on them separately. So go ahead, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If you can give me just a second to share my screen here. Okay, can everybody see that PowerPoint on the screen? Excellent. Thanks, Mayor and members of the city council. This is a request for a number of zoning amendments. And as the mayor said, I'm gonna try to break these up a little bit. And so there are, there are four main kind of zoning categories that are, are, are subject to amendments here this evening. And I'll go through those here in just a minute. Looking at the, at the ordinance options that are in front of the council this evening and, and I, I think to best describe this, the first three ordinance categories, the main categories of amendments are listed under option A. The first category being an amendment to our industrial office zoning district. The second ordinance category would be amendments to fencing as it relates to garden fencing in a front, in a front yard. The third ordinance category would be some changes related to accessory structure design. And the fourth category would be amendments to this ordinance relating to the allowance of chickens within residential zoning districts in the city. So there's kind of four categories here. Within the options, just to try to describe the two resolution options you have, first of all, the all four of the categories are with, are found within ordinance option B. And just to start off, that is the option, that option B is the option that was recommended by the planning commission. Ordinance option A is the first three categories, but does not include anything related to chickens. So again, ordinance option B would include all four of these categories and ordinance option A would include the three categories minus chickens. With that, I'll just kind of move forward with each category as I go through with the first being the industrial zoning districts. And really, there's one amendment being proposed to the industrial zoning district specifically that relates to a requirement that asks for, or requires rather, that a minimum of fifty percent of a lot in the industrial district shall be occupied by bit, by buildings. And that's in the table at the end of the zoning district. And it also, in that same table is a minimum, is a maximum structural coverage of fifty percent. So we've got two ordinance categories that are contradicting each other here a bit. And staff noticed this requirement in the code and based on how industrial sites are developed in the city, there would just be a lot of non-conformities relating to the ordinance requirement that mandates a minimum of fifty percent of the lot to be covered in structures. I think what we would find if we analyzed all the industrial buildings is that most are under fifty percent now, which would be a lot of non-conforming industrial properties. So staff is proposing to delete that language from the ordinance. So that would be the first category within the ordinance changes and that relates to industrial zoning. Go ahead.
I think that's I think that is a whole over from way back when we first started developing our own industrial park. The, the issue was that someone didn't come in and buy a huge lot and then put a building up and then come in later and split it into pieces and sell it off again. So basically keeping industrial development from happening within the development that we were doing. So I would be in favor of removing that.
Good point.
Okay, so the second ordinance category relates to fencing and specifically related to garden fences in front yard areas. This ordinance amendment is, was based on a complaint that we received about a property owner in Baxter that constructed a vegetable garden within a front yard. It's a corner lot and the city received two different complaints regarding that particular fence and, and there were several options presented to that property owner and one of which staff did offer to raise this topic as a potential ordinance amendment because, you know, evaluating the community staff has viewed that there are several existing vegetable gardens that are located within front yards in the city already. And, and so it seemed like an opportunity to just discuss this topic in general by drafting an ordinance amendment. When we first brought this to the planning commission, we had a requirement that the fence couldn't be any longer than forty lineal feet in the front yard. Trying to keep it so that you wouldn't have somebody that's fenced in the whole front yard along the street with a taller fence. And, and that, that, that fence all the way across maybe the entire lot frontage would have been a quote unquote vegetable garden. And so there was a forty-foot lineal foot, a forty lineal foot requirement established. But when the commission reviewed that, they were concerned that there weren't any design standards or any kind of basic requirements that related to aesthetics. The idea of it be vegetable garden fence being in a front yard carried with it concerns about what's the fencing gonna be? Are we gonna have any kind of design standards related to that? So staff went back to the drawing board, so to speak, and drafted what's in red on your screen prior to going to the commission the second time on this issue. And in that, basically, it, it talks about the allowance of, instead of a six-foot high fence in a front yard allowing a five-foot high fence, keeping the forty lineal foot maximum. And then some additional design standards. The, the intent of the design standards was to, to pick fence types that really blend into the natural environment, things that aren't so massing, I guess. You could say so things like welded wire and garden mesh netting or other non-opaque materials, but not including some of, uh, trying to keep a higher aesthetic quality because of their location in a front yard. One thing I'd point out is, of course, if you put your vegetable garden in the, in the rear yard, then you could have a six-foot fence and these ordinance design standards wouldn't apply in the same manner. So there's also requirements about support posts being wood steel or composite with minimum diameter to blend in the environment. And then any horizontal post would be limited to the bottom half of the fence. There, there's a lot of them, fences that get built with wood frames all the way around and it just gives a larger massing to it. And the intent of these standards was try to keep it so if you're gonna allow fencing for gardens in the front yard that, you know, it would be less impactful or less visual to the eye, I guess. And that all those design standards are to be reviewed by the city and need to be approved by the zoning administrator at the time of a fence permit. And just before I move on, so that's the second ordinance category of four here tonight. If anyone has any questions, if not, I can move on to the next one.
Anybody want to, that discussion there at this time?
Your honor, Josh, just for clarity. When we amend an ordinance like this, it really makes it from that point forward administrative, so everybody in Baxter could execute that garden fence the way this ordinance is drafted, correct? So you could look down a street and see every house with some iteration of this if we approve the ordinance. Is that fair to say?
That's fair to say and correct, yes. So. And, you know, I, I think from a staff perspective, we were, you know, I don't, I, I think the picture you just described of every lot in a front yard having a vegetable garden in the front yard is not what you see in Baxter currently. Uh, you know, there are some, but it's not, it's not a situation where you know, we have lots of them, but we have seen some. So we raised it as an ordinance amendment, but understand that that's something that could be a, it's a citywide change. So it could, you could see a lot of additional gardens put in front yards if this is passed. And that would be something we would have to issue those permits, provided they meet these standards, so.
And just for clarity, the setback to the front of the garden fence from the road right of way is what distance?
Zero feet. So they could go right up to the front lot line. They couldn't extend into the right of way for the road, which is a varying distance, but there is no setback for fencing. So it could be right up to the front lot line. So out near the street.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else on that? Okay, move to the third one.
Okay, so the third one relates to accessory structures and this is a, this is a staff driven ordinance change. You know, as we review fence and shed permits in the city of Baxter, you know, one of the things that we've been noticing in, for a while now, but it's getting more and more prevalent is the garden sheds, whether they're under or over a hundred and twenty square feet, that's kind of an ordinance cutoff where you have to get into some additional design standards, but regardless of their size, sheds in general, a lot more of them, and many of them are being proposed that are pre, pre-made by companies. There's still a lot of people building sheds, but a lot of them are pre-purchased. And those pre-purchased sheds are pre-made sheds that you just move on to the property many times are finished with natural wood colors. And one of the things the ordinance talks about currently is that for sheds under a hundred and twenty square feet, so a ten by twelve shed, needs to be consistent with the color of the home. Needs to be consistent with the color of the home. And if you're over a hundred and twenty square feet, the design, the materials. Um and the color needs to be consistent with the home. Now, it doesn't say match the home, but it says consistent with. And consistent with uh opens the door to a lot of interpretation, which is, I think, was intended. Uh because um it could be burdensome for property owners, for example, if they had a stucco house to have to have a shed. That also had to be stuckled. Um, when you're talking about a small garden shed, at the same time. Um, you know, staff was concerned with the fact that um does consistent with um. The home when you have, let's just say, a white house of whatever siding type. Um, is a wood shed that with wood stain consistent with a white house and in terms of its color? Um, and their variables, what if the roof is has matching shingles to the home? What we've taken the interpretation uh with uh with regarding this for for some time is that. If there are elements in the shed design and color that are consistent with the home, we've allowed that. Um even if it's wood colored and the house is white, for example. But um it's something that's it it's that uh staff decided in our annual review of the ordinance to to raise this. And for code amendment, because uh the word consistent with could be interpreted different by differently by different people. And so what we propose to do is to make the some of that um. Um. Some of that um discretion taken away where we actually define that wood and natural wood colors on sheds. Are actually considered regardless of what the house type is to be a consistent. Um, um color and material, because there's so many of them that are proposed that way. So that's really what this amendment is intended to do is to allow staff the the known uh. Uh understanding that we can allow those types of of wood colored and wood stained uh garden sheds within the city of Baxter.
And that was, that was uh immaterial uh of those of the size, is that correct?
Right, so it would be, you know, for the buildings over a hundred and twenty, i- it was, it is immaterial of the size. We would want that ability for any size, yes.
Comments, counsel? Okay, at this time, I'd like to to go back and uh just to make sure that I'm on a solid ground here. Either either of the breads, we can uh, we can make motions uh singularly on each of these, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to keep going on ordinance option B?
I'm interpreting that he wants us, Darryl, Darryl, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought you were thinking we should take action on the first three.
He seems to be frozen his his screen, hopefully not Darryl, but his screen.
Man.
Sounds like we're on pause, huh?
Yep.
Okay.
So Josh is the representative staff member on the on the call. Um I'm assuming that we don't have to test the fires or the emergency sirens now anymore, because they go off every week anyway, right?
Right, exactly, that's that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I, I don't know, I felt fortunate with this last storm, we didn't get the winds that they were predicting.
Oh, isn't that true?
Boy, that sounded scary, what what they were saying on the weather.
Well, just to see that freight train of orange thunderstruck coming from Bismarck all the way to central Minnesota. This boy, oh my goodness.
That was quite a front and and so you just kind of brace yourself and hope for the best and it's just so nice that it didn't get to those levels. At least in our area. I didn't hear if it reached some of those, weren't they predicting seventy plus mile an hour winds?
And large hail. Well, we've had so many frequent uh um. It storm events that have required sirens that we've actually worked to make the basement more comfortable. Used to nasty little corner that we kind of skulk off to when we'd hear the sirens, but now. There's cushions and lights and snacks and bottles of water, we're all set up because it's happening too often.
Right.
Can I, can I interrupt for just a second? Sorry, um Todd. Um Todd DeBoer just called me and he said that they're having problems with the wifi at City Hall. Um, he said it will probably be five or ten minutes before he gets it back working. Um but that we're still live on on YouTube and those that are participating on the webinar.
Okay.
Pass that on.
Thank you.
Everybody here?
Yep.
Yep.
Very sorry, but did did you guys lose it all or were you in it all the time?
We've never left, you're the only one that disappeared.
We're always with it.
There's three of us here that keep disappearing, I guess, so. My question I was trying to ask before we before we got kicked out was uh of our city attorney, can we go back and look at these individually and vote on them individually?
Yeah, if there's concern you might have different votes, it's always best to vote them one at a time.
Yeah, I don't know that, I'm just uh, I'm just asking the question, so. If we go back to um.
Uh oh.
Uh oh.
Good argument for bu- moving back to City Hall.
Are we gone again?
There. At least for a second.
Wow, that was close. I was just gonna say, if it happens again, Todd, you're the vice mayor, keep keep things going so people don't have to wait, if you would, appreciate that.
Alright.
So are we okay with the uh with the uh zoning regulations as it appeared uh to involve the industrial park?
Yeah, your honor, I would move approval of that first uh ordinance amendment to uh delete that ordinance. From the as staff and planning commission are recommending.
Okay. Second by Connie?
Yep.
Okay, uh roll call.
Cross.
Yes.
Holman.
Yes.
Mefio.
Yes.
Tabit.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes. Hey Josh, moving forward.
So the next category was the garden fencing ordinance changes for front yard gardening, garden fencing.
Any thoughts uh thoughts on this one?
Your honor, counsel, you know, and I'm not making a motion, I'm just sharing thoughts uh. So I too drove around, I looked at some of those front yard existings, probably the newest one, you know, that drew attention to. Front yard gardens and and there's so much variability um that if they're kind of hidden by trees, you know, no harm, no foul. You know, nobody sees them, they're not out there, but if you're in kind of an open neighborhood. Um and everybody had one, it would really be a menagerie of, you know, a variety of fences and. And quite honestly, you know, what people, how people value their horticultural um expression. You know, varies a lot from straw bales and pallets to really ornate and beautiful uh garden designs. That are, you know, nothing short of landscape uh pieces of art in people's front yards. So there's this huge variability. Um, all that to say is that I feel like if we're legislating, you know, an ordinance. Um, that this, this is not a health, safety, welfare issue, you know, as I see it. I I don't see this as a health, safety, welfare issue. Um I see this as an aesthetic. Um normative question for us, you know, in terms of what, what's the right thing to do for really the whole city of Baxter? And the whole neighborhood, not the one and not the exception. And in my opinion, it's not a uh. Integration or taking away from gardening in the front yard, it's really not so much that as. Um, do we really wanna staff up and have to enforce? Because if we pass an ordinance, it implies that we are expecting to enforce it. Um, something of of that scale and difficulty, um when we don't do it now and. Wouldn't it be easier um to stick with the ordinance that has served us well for many, many years? Um, rather than modify it to um try to adjust to. A whole myriad of of gardening and fence expressions. And I know the ordinance is about a fence. But it's really about what it all looks like in the cumulative, in my opinion. So as I drove around, I tried to visualize. You know, all up and down Ashdale Lane where I live, I was trying to visualize what would it look like with a garden, everybody's yard and and anywhere else you could pick neighborhood. And I just couldn't get there. I couldn't get to a place where I thought that the normative value of the community would support that. You know, I think one or two or three folks would, no doubt, there that's always the case, but I think the normative value would be. To not make that change. And so that's, that's kind of my ten cents on on the discussion as I think about it.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else have uh opinions?
Can I just ask again, just for clarity while we're discussing it, um what, if we don't move forward with this. What is our current standard exactly?
Yeah, so our current standard exactly allows four foot high fences in a front yard. Um with a permit, so people can have fence in their front yards to four foot high. But the the taller fence is always desired for vegetable gardens just due to deer. Um, getting it, jumping over it and getting into it, so um, you know, the. Front yard, someone can enclose their their entire front yard with a four foot high fence, this would give the additional foot. I would, I would add that the in the intent of the front yard and the fencing regulations and the height requirements. Being as low as four feet in the front yard is, you know, to keep an open feel in the community, it's an aesthetic thing. Um, while allowing people to have fences on their properties, but there's also, there there's a reason why a six foot high fence isn't allowed. In a front yard across the board and that's, that's for that open feel and that's pretty common that cities have limitations on height for fencing in the front yard. But right now, the maximum height is four feet um in the side and rear yard, then they can get up to six foot high fence. So.
Okay. And your honor and council, I would just add to the four foot, because we addressed this in the early two thousands with a fence amendment. Same kind of issue wasn't gardens, but um part of the four foot low kind of fence requirement was to, there was a safety element to it. Because you could actually, the openness that Josh is describing is is completely accurate, but it was so you could see the ball coming into the road, the bicycle coming down the driveway. You know, there was some rationale that you could actually see um potential things coming into the road right of way to as a a vehicle driver. So there, you know, the height was also a safety factor. It's not relevant for the garden, because most of these are wire, you can see through them. But at the time, you know, picket fences and things like that, that height, keeping it down at four allowed um. People on the yard side to see cars, heart people on the car side to see, you know, what was going on in the yard and potentially being a a safety interface.
So I'm gonna toss out there that for some of the same reasons that Mr. Holman brought up. I I actually fall to the opposite side of of this in that being it's more. Of normative and not a health, safety or welfare issue, I'm. One to lean a bit more towards letting people do a little bit more and I would actually say. This looks to me like the extra foot is is pretty limited in terms of of what theoretically. If everyone were to do what is what is currently allowable, we would have potentially four foot fences. At the property line all the way across already, so this would only allow for an additional one foot. At a. Forty foot maximum length. Um, I actually, I guess, I don't see. I I I would rather stay out of the, this is a beautiful versus non-beautiful fence as much as possible. Just from my point of view, because I have a terrible uh opinion of of what beautiful and and not beautiful is. I can't figure out art and and what what constitutes beautiful and I'd rather not determine that for others. Um, I I I also kind of drove around and I've seen several of these in front yards. Um, another issue I'd bring up on on the potential foreside is. A lot of the homes that that I looked at have very, very deep front yards. And not necessarily such a deep backyard or the ones along the river. Um, from what I'm understanding of fence rules and and bluff impact zones and all of that stuff. You might not even be able to have a structure in your backyard, depending on where your home is located compared to the bluff. Um, so you might have, for example, a uh. one of these five foot tall fences that's seventy five, eighty feet off the road in the front yard of one of these houses rather than right on the property line. And you're also making that unacceptable, which it's, it's a hard, I guess, the whole issue to me is hard, but I would, I would be more towards the side of allowing this, this change, just because I, I don't see it as a massive alteration other than to allow people to do these, these garden fences that seem pretty limited.
And just to add my, my few thoughts, I guess I would like to support the property owners who are going to the great amount of effort to have a garden, which I'm sure they plan to harvest and eat from. And to me, another foot of fencing, like Zach just said, the mayor may not even make a huge difference as far as the aesthetics. I would like to support the, the property owners who are going to that extra effort to plant and care for the garden and use it as a learning experience for their family.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I think that, you know, one of the talking points was is that would this even have come up if we hadn't had the complaint of what happened over there in that particular location and the fence that was no questions were actually asked of staff, what can we do in the right way, a few other things. And so I think, I think there was a perception that maybe we're changing the ordinance to make it, to make it easier rather than, you know, correct the problem. And so I just, I want to make sure that that's not the case, that we really, this change in this ordinance is really a benefit, a good thing, going in the right direction and not just because it was brought up because of, you know, what happened there in the, in the first place. So Josh, got comments on that?
Sure, happy to, Mr. Mayor. The, the, while it came up, the discussion came up based on the complaint, but staff had been noticing front yard garden fences as well. And, you know, I, I think it's very, very accurate to say that there's many different types of lots. And there's, you know, as council member Tabit described, there's long, deep front yard lots. There's there's also corner lots. There's other types of through lots and there are, there are potentially properties where it would be challenging to fit a garden such as this particular homeowner that's on a corner lot to fit a garden in a location that didn't that where it could fit, you know, for example, I would say that most property owners, most standard lots are going to have an opportunity to put their garden, their vegetable garden in the backyard or a side yard. But there are unique lots where where, you know, the best fit might be to get into a front yard area if it's on a corner lot or something like that. But those situations are fewer than the norm, which would be that most everybody would have space in the backyard. But, you know, with the, the fact that we had seen some of them that just went up in the community, you know, with or without any attempt at fence permits and, and it just, it posed a larger question for the city staff, which is why we, we proposed the ordinances, is there a way to, you know, regulate this in a manner that would be acceptable to the community since it seems as though some were going that route anyway, just on their own. And so that was, it was definitely, it was definitely a staff interest to raise the discussion, just based on what we were seeing in the community as well. So.
Okay, thank you. Any other last comments?
I'd just like to ask one last thing of Mr. Doty, if I could. Um, Josh, by forty lineal feet of front fence frontage along a public or private street, is that a single side or are you talking a five foot by five foot square would also be forty feet? I just want to make sure I'm understanding the intent of what we're, what we're voting on here.
Right. The intent is that if you are, if your, if your lot is a hundred foot wide, you can only have forty feet of width to the fence along the front yard. So that you're not going to end up with. So it could be deep, you know, the fence could be the, the the fence could go back from the front, street frontage, but no more than forty lineal feet along the public or private street. Trying to keep that width down and, and keeping that, the idea was to simply limit the width of the fence along the, along the street frontage. But there could, you know, it could be a big garden with lots of depth behind that forty feet. So it could be a forty by sixty fence, you know, in actuality. And, and I share the, the concern, you know, anytime you draft, draft a really prescriptive ordinance like this that tries to pin down fence design and forty lineal feet and the height's more straightforward, but those types of things has variables. And so you know, if there's concern, you know, staff can always work continue to work at further clarifying what we would all find to be acceptable. And so there's, there's variations, but that is the intent is forty feet along the street.
Sure. And that's as compared to a theoretical one hundred percent coverage with a chain link fence at four feet high.
Correct. That could be across the board, a hundred feet wide, as wide as the lot right up to the front property line. But if it's in, if the fence intent is to surround a garden, to get that additional one foot of height under this ordinance to get up to five feet, it could only be forty feet along the width of the front property line.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Look for a motion then to approve this or?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So we're still going to allow the screening and landscape fencing at four foot for a hundred percent of the lot, correct?
Correct. This would be in an additional allowance of fence for vegetable gardens in a front yard.
Okay. So it's worded, it will fit into the ordinance that way. So there's no confusion.
Well, I can always be confused, but yeah, yes, it's worded correctly, I believe.
Well, you have it as a B.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure what A is.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't have the whole. I don't have the whole ordinance up on the screen, but yes, it's, it's still clear in the ordinance that you can still do the four foot in the entire front yard. And you'd have the ability to do this for vegetable, for a garden.
Okay.
Okay, we're done. Looking for a motion to approve or to deny?
I'll move approval.
Motion by Zach.
Connie seconds.
Connie, any further discussion? Roll call.
Ross.
Yes.
Holman.
Opposed.
Lucio.
Yes.
Tabit.
Yes.
Wilson.
And I, I'm a no also. So, all right, we have a we have a successful motion and we will move, move forward. Accessory structures. Comments, questions about this one? Anything you want to add? I know that we always try to make things easier for staff so they don't have to stand at the counter and go on and on about these things. And so I understand that part of it. I, I too did. When we built our house, I also built a shed. And I did the hundred twenty square feet, so I didn't have to match the siding of the house. But I did match the house paint color. And when I bought the shed, I told the company, this is the color it needs to be. And they painted it and delivered it that color. Very happy that it looks great. So I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's quite that much of a hardship. It was done, you know, fairly easily. I do like, I do like the way it looks when, when sheds match the house and that's just a, that's just a personal, personal feeling there. So look for other comments or if there are another motion.
I've seen a lot of sheds that say Yeti or Ice Castle on the side of them too.
Yeah.
I, I guess, not trying to be the contrarian, but I, I, I find a, a natural wood color to be one that, that tends to blend in everywhere. In this city particularly, I guess, with the amount of wooded acreage we have, I guess I, I find natural wood to be an acceptable option. I guess that'd be my comment there.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm not trying to be petty either. I just, it's a personal preference. I like the, I like the way it looks and I like the way we were, we were headed there. So doesn't mean I'm right either. Anybody else? Look for a motion then?
I'll move approval.
Have a motion by Zach.
And Connie will second.
Anybody, second by Connie. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ross.
Opposed.
Holman.
Opposed.
Lucio.
Yes.
Tabit.
Yes.
Olsen.
No. Okay, moving forward.
Okay, so this is the the fourth major category of the ordinance. And this relates to the potential allowance of chickens within the city. And I think before I kind of get into the ordinance that's drafted here this evening, just wanted to kind of just make sure to refresh everyone's memory on, and for those that don't know what the ordinance currently has regarding chickens. The city of Baxter currently does allow chickens. It's in a limited manner. It limits chickens to two zoning districts in the city, and they're both rural types, styles of zoning districts, and they're on our larger rural lots on the outer edges of our city, not, not the entire outer edge, but when you get out of the urban core, you'll find those zoning districts. And what that ordinance currently says is that you can have chickens if you come through what's called an interim use permit process where you come in and request approval for, for chickens. And there needs to be a three hundred foot setback to property lines. And that, that approval process is available to those property owners in Baxter in, within those zones, provided they can meet a three hundred foot setback. So you're generally talking about much larger properties. This ordinance that's been drafted here this, this evening is allowing chickens in more of an urban lot scenario would apply to many more lots within the city of Baxter. And that is the, 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 the style of the ordinance that's for your consideration this evening. Just to go into a little bit further detail about the kind of the spirit and intent on how staff drafted the ordinance, we did research nine other cities. Ten, when you consider, we factored in our own current requirements and reviewed what other cities are allowing for chickens. And specifically, we found that five cities were similar to Baxter in terms of allowing chickens and only rural zones. There are three cities that allowed chickens in an urban residential scenario, which is what this ordinance does in two cities that did not allow chickens. So just to give a, a sampling of, and those cities were of comparable size in our general region of the state. So it was comparable sized cities in our area. As I mentioned, we allow chickens currently in the rural zoning district. You know, the request has been proposed to the city council and the, the city council forwarded the discussion to the planning commission. And what staff did to raise this topic of discussion with the planning commission is we, we took a shot at drafting an ordinance to allow that discussion to occur. When we drafted the ordinance, we did look at the other three cities in our region that allow chickens. And quite frankly, used many of the aspects of, of the combination of those ordinances when drafting, when, when drafting the draft ordinance for Baxter. When you look at the ordinance in detail and, and there's, there's a lot in that ordinance, one thing was clear in looking at it is that to, to attempt to protect the the situation to neighboring properties, when looking at chickens, there's just a need for a lot of requirements. If you're, if you're of the mind that you should protect the neighboring property owners, you know, from perspective of upkeep, smell, odor, visual impact, those kinds of things. And that's really what this ordinance is geared to do is to set in place a, if, if, if they were to be allowed in the city, some pretty conservative standards to try to protect those neighboring property aspects. So this list of thirteen items kind of is a, is a summary, it is a summary rather of, of the ordinance. Just to highlight some of these, capping the number of chickens to four and those four chickens would have to be hens with no roosters. The ordinance requires a permit process and an annual renewal. And that permit process would be administrative and something that staff would be able to issue similar to a fence or a shed permit, you could we would issue a chicken permit to property owners and we would review their application based on the ordinance standards. In the ordinance, there's a permission granted required from adjacent property owners. We, we drafted this into the ordinance with the idea that you know, some cities do this and some don't. The concern staff had with was, you know, what if a neighbor moves? You know, how does that work? But the intent that we kept going back to was that when the permit is issued, they would need permission required from adjacent neighbors and without it, they couldn't move forward. Just another probably more protective approach to neighboring properties with that ordinance requirement. And that's why that got added. There's a requirement that you have to have a chicken coop and a chicken run. And there's very specific ordinance standards to protect the welfare of the animals as well as have them appropriately contained. Also, there's a requirement for a minimum lot size. So in, in Baxter are in our R one zoning district where this draft ordinance would allow chickens in those, in that zone as well as the rural zones. If you want to just have four hens, you could, you could do this under those rural zones or R one, which most of our single family in Baxter is in R one zone. And the minimum lot size in R one is fifteen thousand square feet, to give you an idea. And there's, there's a good number of properties that are at fifteen thousand square feet, and then they go up in size from there as well. So you can, there's a a good variety of lot sizes, but all of them would be the minimum fifteen thousand square feet. To give you an idea, the minimum lot size to be allowed to have chickens under this ordinance would be thirty thousand square feet. So moving on, there's also a setback requirement of twenty five feet and an additional setback for corner lots. So that when you have a very visible situation on multiple street frontages, that you'd have to set the coop and the run back at least to the setback, the front setback of the home, or you'd have to push the coop and run further back to meet the distance from the house to the street when on a corner lot. So, but in, in a non corner lot situations, the setback would be twenty five feet. There's also requirements for screening of the coop, coops and runs. And that the fit, the screening would be done through fencing. There is an exception for possibility of natural vegetation or vegetation to be used for screening if it provides a full screen of the coop and run area to adjacent properties and leaf off conditions. So you'd have to have a thicker wooded buffer The adjacent properties and leaf off conditions. So you'd have to have a thicker wooded buffer. Uh, for staff to be able to approve uh chicken coop and chicken run on a, in a backyard of a lot. Uh, without um, without a fence, there would have to be extraordinary situation in place where it would be screened. Even in the winter months to those neighboring properties. Um, so you'd be looking at a fence for most situations. There's requirements for uh prohibiting slaughter uh and breeding of chickens. In in this man in in the residential neighborhoods, there'd be a prohib- prohibit. We would prohibit, let me rephrase, we would prohibit uh selling eggs under this ordinance. Um, so it basically limits it, the four chickens to um just used by those property owners. That have their own chickens. I'm sure they, you know, there would be no requirements for giving away eggs or something like that. But um, the intent is for it to be um not a selling situation where eggs would be sold throughout the community. Requirements on sanitary conditions, odor, etc. There's a lot in that ordinance about that. Oops, I I bumped forward. There we go, sorry about that. There's a lot in the ordinance about sanitary conditions, making sure pests and rodents aren't getting into the. Chicken feed and the feeders and having things contained, controlling odor. Um, there's requirements to ensure healthy conditions for the animals. And um, there's um also in there, and I I don't see it listed here in the list of thirteen, but there's a. Uh, it prohibits the use of chicken manure uh being in compost bins as well. Um, so there's um, there's, there's that additional requirement in the ordinance for Baxter. Um, lastly, there's uh rights established under the ordinance for a reasonable timeframe of city to inspect property. Uh, to make sure that um there's an a- an ability for proper enforcement. And then there's uh requirements on uh what happens when there's violations, the ability for us to revoke permits. And penalty requirements that's similar to what's in our nuisance ordinance if um there's a lack of response from a given property owner. So it's a, it's a comprehensive ordinance that allows a permit process to allow them. Um, and um, and our ability to regulate them. Um, you know, when staff drafted the ordinance, uh, we originally um did recommend denial of the. Of the chicken app part of the ordinance, um, and our findings were based on um. Were based on en- enforcement concerns, um, and um, and so we stated those to the planning commission. Uh, but moving forward, um, the planning commission did vote three, two in favor of uh allowing the the. Chicken ordinance to pass, um, they did vote approval of that three to two. So that is the recommendation from the planning commission. I guess I'll turn it back to the mayor and council for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Josh. Just like to give a quick rundown of how we got to where we are. Josh covered some of this, but. Uh, back a while back, we received a petition from people who were wanting to have this subject revisited and talked about. Um, and so they presented us with that petition and then they also made a, we listened to a presentation by them. We had really hoped to be back in the building, you know, by then so that we could have a, the same thing with a public hearing, we could have a. A a bigger scenario, more comfortable what we're used to doing, and then maybe allow for more people to be a part of this. But the council didn't uh make any motions or action on that uh first go around there because it goes back to our our planning and zoning for the. Uh, public hearings, that's where they, that's where they uh transpire. So that was held, that was held uh last week and after lots of discussion and uh strong feelings on both sides. Uh, the motion was made on a, like Josh said, on a three to vote and it was sent to the council. And I think some of the people might be listening in with us here now tonight too, but all the comments were compiled. Yeah, put together, you've had the pages of them uh in your packets since Friday there. And so uh, I think that every, every word that was spoken and was talked about uh is is in those notes there. So we have a pretty good idea of how people uh feel. So now the question is before the council and it's for us to discuss and to move on uh one way or the other. And so I would just open it up for questions and comments uh from this group. Uh, what are your thoughts?
Well, I'm so impressed with the amount of time and effort and research that the planning and zoning. Um, commission put into this, not to mention the people who went to the time and effort to get the um. Not finding the word. The young lady who brought the topic to the council a couple of months ago. Um, I'm impressed with everyone involved to this point. I also appreciate too that it was written into the ordinance that the um adjacent property owners were to give their permission. Before it could be passed, I think that's key. Um, so I'm in support of it and I just, I would be real curious to find out a year from now how many. Property owners really followed through and had the chickens. I do have one, one question though. Did I read somewhere that four animals would be allowed per property owner? So if a a family had two dogs, it would be allowed two chickens or is that incorrect?
Good question. I think that was uh referenced in the story in the paper, but. Um, that's actually in the city of Brainerd's ordinance where they combine the chickens with other animals in terms of the ratios in which. Animals would be allowed. We decided uh with draft for Baxter not to go there. Um, and so chickens would be separate from any other uh animal requirements. So the amount of, the number of four chickens would be allowed per property owner at four regardless of their separate licensing. For dogs, cats, that kind of thing. So we did not combine total numbers in the way that maybe some other cities do, uh, at least under this draft.
Okay.
Mark.
So this is just for our, our zoning. It's not for residential, multifamily residential. Whether it be duplexes or apartments, correct?
Correct. This is for the R one zone as well as the rural zones, um, but not um R two and not R three.
So this changes um, changes the requirements on the rural zones also?
Yeah, good question. I think that could be potentially confusing, so I'm happy to try to answer that. The city kept the rural zone ability to have an interim use permit for chickens. The way it is structured today, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation with the three hundred foot setback. And so if you're on a, let's say a forty acre property in rural Baxter. And you want to go through the interim use permit process to have more than four hens. You could still go through that interim use permit process to request a larger number. Um, because we don't have, we don't have a cap to for um hens versus roosters or numbers. It's all um, how you say, requested as part of that interim use permit, which is an approval that has a time limit attached to it. That that would be a singular request reviewed by the city um planning commission and then acted on by the council. We did not propose to delete any of that. So under this ordinance, this new or more urban chicken ordinance would be additive. So for those two rural zones, if you had the three hundred foot setback and you wanted to come through the interim use permit process. To have more than four chickens, you could make that request. However, if you're in the rural zones and you want to just have four, you could go through the administrative process and get four hens. And follow this drafted ordinance even in rural zones. So um, in rural zones, you have a couple of options here. But in R one, there wouldn't be the ability to have more than four hens and you'd be subject to this drafted ordinance. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but is that somehow written into this?
Right, it's all, it's all, all of those options are still available on with how it's written, yes.
Okay, cuz I don't see anything on the, on the two rural zones.
Um, this is a summary of the entire ordinance. If you, if you're interested, I could pull up the whole ordinance, wha- what we.
No, that's all right. I just want to make sure it's, it's, you're, you're comfortable with the way it's written.
Yeah, we have uh in the rural zones, there's, it's listed as an interim use permit to have chickens. Um, and it's also now being added as an accessory use to the rural zones to add chickens. Subject to this uh chicken ordinance. So we feel it's, it's been covered.
Okay.
That's my only question. Anybody else?
Just for clarification and I apologize if you said it, um, but the chicken coops and the runs. Are those allowed in a front yard or not?
No, they're not allowed, they're only allowed in a rear yard.
Got it.
Um, it it limits to rear yards, so you're looking at the larger R one properties or rural properties. Where they can only fit it in a rear yard with those setbacks in place.
Anybody else?
Jump in quick, um, I just wanted to make a note um that I'm pretty impressed with the level of detail. That staff and the commission and everybody involved has gone to on this. I'll just throw out there that before all of this came down, before I had the discussion with Kennedy. And before seeing how all of this shook out, I was pretty strongly opposed to the concept of chickens inside of any city. But having considered that petition, all the comments I've seen, the context of everything that's gone on in twenty twenty. Allowing people to be a little bit more self-sufficient. Um, and the fact that that you, Josh, and staff involved uh as well as the commission. Have done such a good job of trying your best to cover all of the objections people might have, disease or odor, visual standards. Yard side, size, uh, neighbor consent, a a way for the permit to be revoked. Um, I, I just think that this is about as good as we can do for the time being right now. So um, I guess my comment is just that I'm, I'm really impressed so far.
Okay, thank you.
Um, your honor, the Josh and and council members. Um, the only holdback or the only concern I have really is that number three, the permission from the adjacent neighbor. I think it's a nice thing to do. I think it's a great acknowledgement, you know, of neighbors, but. My life experience has introduced me to a lot of really difficult neighbors too. And, and so I always think. To the negative scenario, not every neighbor is kind of uh willing to work with you and I, and. You know, if we've done, and we have, you know, staff has done a masterful job of putting this all together. Isn't that good enough? Do we still need kind of the, the social dynamic of, of the neighbor? And my, my feeling would be that um, the ordinance stands on its own. You know, that, that people should be able to proceed with that use um, independent of the personality. Because there are no sideboards, it's completely subjective what a neighbor can say. Um, they don't have to have any science or any history or any um background, or all they have to do is say no. And, and then the use ends and, and that's what concerns me is that we're putting a lot of. We're doing a city ordinance, a legislative action in the hands of a really arbitrary and capricious scenario. You know, where, where a neighbor can um derail a really good plan and, and option. So I'm just, I just share my concern with number three that um. I'm just not comfortable with, with that being in there.
Okay, anybody else? Mark.
I have to say I'm not comfortable with it not being in there. If we are going to legislate something and. Not give, I mean, this has been through the process with this in there. For us to take it out at the last minute, not have any, you know, comments from planning and, and the. And the citizens, I'm a little concerned with that. I'm, I'm still a little concerned with the whole idea of chickens in our one area. I mean, we have, we have zones right now that they're allowed in. We. We've looked at other cities and, you know, my understanding that only three out of ten of those cities allow it. And, you know, our one. You know, that's, you know, not an overwhelming majority. So I'm still not uh convinced on this.
Okay, thank you. Anybody, I don't want to cut anybody off. Anybody else got something you want to add? I just, if you just allow me to think aloud here for a minute, one of my concerns uh in this whole process was that. It seemed like it was coming together pretty fast and I I made, made the comment at the planning zoning meeting that um. Who are involved in this, other people that want it, does, does the rest of the city even know what we're talking about? And interestingly, uh, enough, when the article came out Sunday, the emails and the phone calls started coming the other way. Said, you know, what are you talking about? No, you know, we don't, we don't want chickens in our city. And so that was always my concern is how, and, and I don't know what, other than that article in the paper, I don't know how else, you know, to get that word out. But I was hoping, you know, for more, more input from both sides. And I'm not, I'm not putting down the efforts that happened here, so don't get me wrong. But when I looked through that petition, it was like fifteen hundred signatures or something. I went line by line back, back when we got it. And I took out all the people in Japan, in Germany, and every place else and looked for Baxter residents. And I think, in fact, I think Kennedy's mother made the comment that there was, there was a hundred people, over a hundred people from Baxter. And that's kind of what I, what I got too, when I was going through that. So if we look at a hundred people and we look at husbands and wives that maybe sign that representing one property. But does that really tell us? Is that, is that any kind of uh majority when you look at sixty some, eighty six hundred people? Uh, even if there was over a hundred, um, I, I don't know. And I just, I was not comfortable knowing whether or not people really knew what we were doing. And again, uh, the emails and phone calls that we received this week would indicate to me that uh, there's. Not everybody's excited about this and so we kind of need to, we kind of need to be careful here. Again, emails and calls uh uh have kind of come in, uh, in my opinion, kind of the other way. Let's see here. So is it an accurate representation? The cop, some of the comments that were made that I've given thought to uh was that we already have wild animals in our city. We have bears, we have turkeys. We have fox and, and I know that's true. Saw a red fox the other day down by Walmart. Uh, but that's kind of a natural thing. Those animals are coming through our city, but they're not coming to live next door to us. You know, they're, they're doing their thing and they're moving on through more of a natural thing. Uh, we're not really uh looking to uh to invite them and quite the opposite. And I don't know, where does it stop? Uh, I'm told that City Hall got phone calls as soon as that article hit. And people started asking, well, what about this animal? Uh, pot-bellied pigs is a, is a, is a, a common. Uh, uh, conversation that comes up from time to time. And so how, how does? How, how do we stop with chickens? You know, that kind of a thing. Uh, to Todd's comment uh about the neighbors, I made this comment too the other night that uh I have friends that live in, in Brainerd. Yeah, they're out, of course, around fifty foot lots over there. You know, they were, they were approached by their neighbors, good neighbors, they liked their neighbors, but the neighbors wanted to have chickens. And they said to me, you know, there are, we, we don't want chickens, but we don't dare not sign because these, we don't want to hurt their feelings. They're good people, they're good neighbors, we want to keep up that relationship. And so there's a, there's an element of peer pressure, you know, for people to sign off whether, whether they want, you know, uh, chickens or not. The other comment uh that was made is that this is a really good learning experience for kids. And, and that's true, if that would happen. But if you're a parent of chi- of children, and if you're a parent of grand or grandchildren. Uh, we've been through this where like, my son says, if you just get me a dog, I'll take care of him. I'll scoop after him, I'll feed him, I'll water him, and that doesn't happen. And so uh adults need to, I think, uh, not always, I mean, some kids will, will take this to heart. But I think adults, uh, if this happens, adults need to be prepared to be the, the chicken caretakers because that's just the way, that's just kind of the way that is. Um, two different comments that came this week were people talking about people that weren't taking care of the coops and, and chickens were getting out. They're crossing the road, people are swaying, trying to, trying to wait for. They're crossing the road. People are swaying, trying to try to avoid from, you know, hitting these chickens and, you know, almost creating, you know, some other uh, unintended consequences for that. And, you know, probably some other things too. I don't want to monopolize them. And I, you know, I kind of sound like the prophet of doom tonight. And that's just, that's just not the case at all. I love this city. I've lived in my neighborhood for forty one years. One of the reasons we came here is because of the standards that we had. Our neighborhoods were desirable. Houses go up for sale, they're sold almost immediately because people, people want to be here. And so I've, I feel charged, uh, you know, to maintain those uh, standards that that have been put down before me, long before me, people, uh, that thought some of this stuff through it. And so I struggle with it. Uh, I never in my forty one years that I ever think that we would be considering uh, having chickens. Yeah. I just, uh, I don't think that, uh, you know, I guess enough said, I just, I struggle with it. Um, I I don't think that it's as popular as we think it is. Uh, that's just a, that's that's a maybe an uneducated guess, but based on what I've, what I've been hearing for the last week. So that's all I've got to say. Uh, and again, uh, I'm not just trying to be upset about things. I just, uh, uh, I've given, I've given a thought, I think, and this is how I I really feel about our city. And I just think that uh, um, the little lots that we have over my neighborhood, um, it's too close, it's too close for comfort. And so anyway, having said that, we need to move forward now. Yeah, I believe in democracy and the vote and whatever happens, happens. So looking for a motion.
I would make a motion that we pass the chicken ordinance, for lack of a better word, as proposed.
Yeah, motion by Lysio.
Second.
Second by Tabit. Any further discussion? Anybody else got something you want to say? This is the time. Okay, roll call.
No.
Holman.
Yes.
Tabit.
Yes.
Lysio.
Yes.
Wilson.
Oh. So we have a motion and we have a vote and we move forward. Uh, that's great. Hey, Josh, you're on deck, I think, for B.
Give me one second here.
Sure.
Just trying to close out some screens here. Okay, sorry about the delay there while I pulled up the next, the next screen. So this is a um, a request for discussion related to mobile vending. With the issuance of the executive order twenty dash seventy four, Governor Walson lessened the restrictions on how Minnesotans are supposed to live and do business during this peacetime emergency. And one of the things that um, that staff has been hearing about specifically related to COVID is a number of calls uh, in the last month related to to mobile vending. Um, there, there are, I think it's in the, in the report, in the packet, that specifically in the last thirty days, we've had contact from seven separate mobile vending companies that are interested in locating uh, food trucks, food trailers, concession uh, stands or what have you within private property in our commercial districts within the city of Baxter. And, um, you know, I've been talking with uh, a lot of these business owners and just, you know, asking, you know, you know, why are we hearing uh, from all of you right now when we haven't heard from you necessarily in the past? We've always gotten some interest about mobile vending, but never at this level in this short of timeframe. And um, what's been explained is that, you know, with with COVID nineteen there, and obviously uh, with the limitations on large gatherings, festivals, fairs, and things like that just aren't happening. And um, these uh, business owners are looking for a place to locate um, and operate their business. And so um, it's not just us. There's, you know, I think a lot of these uh, vendors are landing in other cities. And each city has to address this in their own way. Um, and so that's why this is on the agenda is to see uh, what the council's interest is on how to address the requests that's been, that are being received and kind of the volume of requests. Um, you know, I don't know how many more we'll get, you know, in the next month. I don't know if seven will be it, or if we'll go up to fourteen or some higher number than that. I don't know. Um, but I would um, just explain that in our current mobile vending ordinance, we have a cap on the amount of mobile vendors that can be licensed at four. Um, the reason for that, uh, if the council were called back at the time we passed the mobile vending ordinance was that um, you know, the the idea of the Baxter ordinance was that um, the vendors at that time were requesting the ability to kind of float within the community and have up to ten pre-approved sites. And um, you know, after the ordinance got approved, a lot, uh, most of those specific vending companies that really helped the city craft that ordinance went away um, and and didn't move forward. And what we've been seeing since then is vendors that are more interested in having one or two sites, maybe at the max, but the ability to go back to those sites repeatedly throughout the summer months. Um, and um, and so the ordinance was never really used to its full capacity. I would say that each year since we've adopted the ordinance, we've, we've done um, as high as just two vending companies. We've never licensed more than two in a given year, I think. Um, and so um, receiving seven calls in a month was certainly a lot more than we've ever seen before. And I guess the question that staff proposes to the council is, is the city interested in um, looking at any kind of leniency um, during this uh, peacetime emergency? Um, you know, the ci- the city could look at some sort of uh, more lenient administrative process as an option, similar to what we did with outdoor seating for restaurants, if the council has wishes like that. Um, we could also look at proposing some amendments to the cap number if there's comfort level to allow more vendors in town, um, which would be more of a permanent change. Um, or we could look at a a different kind of crafting of that ordinance as well. Um, but um, two of the vending uh, applications or two of the vendors that we spoke with actually um, were located uh, in Mills, the Mills parking lot, and staff had spoken with them. They weren't aware of the need for the license. And uh, once they found out about it, they quickly submitted applications. And those are the two applications that are the next two agenda items for you this evening. And wh- while we would normally put those on the consent agenda, we wanted to pose this question first to just to see if there is any kind of feedback from the council on how we would uh, approach this volume, I guess you could say, and and if there's interest in doing anything different other than our normal cap of four. Of course, the third option is to keep our ordinance the way it is and licensed for a year. Um, and we can do that as well. We can keep things status quo. But just given the situation of what we've been hearing, thought we would pose that for discussions to the council, um, before the council acted on these two license requests. Um, last, I guess, one, I'm sorry, I I should have said this, I'm, I apologize. You know, one other um, item to note is you know, there are, there are business owners uh, within our community that are interested in mobile vending and um, with the cap on four, we're a first come, first served situation. So the only other thing I wanted to point out is you know, it's whoever gets their applications in first, get the opportunity for the license, and then they can carry those licenses forward with preference for the next calendar year. So if we quickly get to four, and there's a property owner in another part of the city that maybe has had a mobile vending company in the past, and they don't get in, in time to be one of the four, they're gonna be out of luck. So that would just be one other point that of record, that I wanted to make to the record of a concern, given the volume of of new vendors that we're seeing at this time. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council has.
Okay, thanks. Questions, comments? Mark?
So refresh my memory, Josh. The current ordinance, do we make any ties back to bricks and mortar restaurants?
Yes, we do. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a setback requirement, um, unless they can get permission from the brick and mortar restaurant to be closer. Uh, then there wouldn't be a setback requirement. I think it's like two hundred feet from, two or three hundred feet from a brick and mortar restaurant in terms of where they locate their their, their food truck or food trailer. But like I said, that gets, that's a waivable thing if they can get the restaurant to grant permission.
Okay, but there isn't anything in there that says, um, the applicants have to have a brick and mortar restaurant.
Nope, it's a separate allowance for mobile vending.
Okay.
Uh, Your Honor, Council, I'm, I'm concerned about the cap, you know, more on the democracy side. Uh, Mr. Tabit's kind of weighing in on my philosophies here. You know, that this is definitely not a health, safety, welfare kind of an issue. Um, but it is, it is, um, I think initially, I know, I can speak for myself, when we went into the food truck, I think I had a lot of anxiety of just seeing the whole town turn into a carnival. And I was really opposed to what I envisioned that looking like, uh, kind of like my garden fence spiel tonight, you know, if I envision, you know, the extreme. And I think that's, I can own, you know, how I felt about it at the time. But in the end, that hasn't been what happens. And that isn't what happens in St. Cloud and St. Paul and other places that I get to see people move, you know, toward food trucks for specific events and reasons. And it's really not um, a destination. Um, so I I'm, I'm really concerned that we have a cap because it it squelches um, others. The the second concern that's come to me from from local businesses uh, what do we charge? And, you know, I'm hitting you cold with that question, Josh, but you know, what's it cost to be a mobile vendor in Baxter, for example? And 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 kind of comparing that to what actual admin is associated with that, you know, was kind of the question. I don't know the answer, you know, you might. Um, how much do we have to do? Does the health department really inspect them? Or do we, you know, all that kind of, that was kind of what was asked of me, and I thought, well, I don't know, you know, it. Um, can you talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely. So Mayor Council, the the application fee was recently amended um, at a recent council meeting because um, the feedback we were getting from the mobile vendors that had shown up year after year, um, that were one of those, you know, one or two applications we've been seeing, were just saying, you know, we come to this one site, you know, a few times a year, and there's a three hundred dollar application fee and you know, and that's for the season. So to answer your question, at that time, the fee was three hundred dollars for a license annually. So you repay that each new calendar year, starting January one. Um, and the feedback we were getting is that, geez, with the three hundred dollar fee, it doesn't really make it hardly worth it, given the amount of sales that we're doing. So it just, it was, it was potentially precluding people from coming to, you know, give it a go. Um, and so recently, the city council did agree to a fee schedule change to change that fee from three hundred to two hundred dollars uh, to offer some uh, leniency to the fee, but still trying to cover staff's time a little bit because we do spend a lot of time going through, you know, a lengthy ordinance that covers a lot of different standards. And one of those standards is in fact um, verification that they have a Department of Health license. So we, you know, we don't uh, do any of the health inspections with mobile vending, but we require that they show us that they have a license from the state. So that we know that that has been covered by the vending company. Um, and and as well as insurance, um, there's site placement requirements, there's uh, regulations about um, you know, just a a number of things across the board with mobile vending. Um, but hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, that helps them. You're you're making me feel like uh, I should, obviously, we approved that fee schedule, and I just didn't know that line item. So I'm happy to learn that we lowered the fee. That's a great, a great piece of information. Um, yeah, I again, I'll I'll just close because I, you know, I'm supportive, more supportive now than when we started in the food truck ordinance business. Mainly because I've just, you know, not been taken back or or uh, seen a negative uh, out of it. And, you know, if we can, it's a, it's another kind of market segment, uh, sector that that fills an itch. Um, I've enjoyed it, you know, from community to community, certainly our own. Um, so I think if we head down a path of of reducing the cap, that that would help um, the business, help the businesses that are dependent on the food trucks as well.
And anybody else? Zach?
I'd I'd have to agree with Mr. Holman on the concept of when, when it was brought up that uh, if if four vendors got in, they could theoretically be the four vendors for a long period of time and block out others by default. Um, that would be a concern to me. I I guess I'd be curious to know if anyone has any thoughts. I'm I'm feeling like um, the fact that these are all being operated with the permission of private business owners on those properties now is what it sounds like. Um, it's relatively self-regulating in that if it starts to go down that kind of inappropriate carnival atmosphere of of not looking reasonable, you would hope that the business owner at the, at the property level would would help regulate that. Um, but I don't know. Am I reading that right? And and does anyone have any differing opinions on that?
I would just respond to say that that is accurate. They need property owner permission. That's one of the things required of the ordinance.
Yeah, I would just add to it, to that the the property owner, you know, if it's Jack Pine or Roundhouse or wherever they are, um, they get requests from their clientele, can get the pizza guy back again, or whatever the case may be. So I I think it's driven uh, aesthetically and quality wise by by the constituency of the private businesses there.
I think it, uh.
Yeah, I, I don't see an issue with raising the the cap. I think that's fine. Four was, four was pretty conservative when we started this. Um, little perspective, as far as the two hundred dollars a year for the permit. I know um, a lot of food vendors have to pay two hundred dollars a weekend for an event that we've, you know, had in the city or in the area. So um, I don't think the fee's out of, out of line at all.
If I could comment on that, Mr. Mayor and uh, Councilmember Cross, definitely agree with you. I think, I think what that was uh, more related to is a vendor that's maybe coming to the city twice, once or twice. And that's where the three hundred dollar uh, complaint, not complaint, but just concern came from. But yeah, no. Very, very much understood that. Um, and and agree that, you know, I don't think we're at all out of line. And there's been other vendors that said two hundred is is more than fair. So.
Connie?
Yeah, um, I guess unprecedented times, I think whatever we can do to encourage people to be out safely and about and enjoying themselves and as long as it is the property owner's right to say yea or nay, come on my property. I'm all for increasing the numbers. And my my only concern and the only reason I would hesitate a little bit would be that I want our our Baxter businesses to be first and foremost as far as our support. But at the same time, if they don't get their permit application in in time, I guess shame on them if everyone knows what the um, expectations are. So I I would encourage the increase of um, permits from four to seven, if I remember that number correctly.
Anybody else? Just, just a couple of comments, uh, probably tying into what Todd and Mark both have talked about, uh, when it comes to the fees. Uh, you guys will remember back when we started talking about this, we got a lot of pushback from the chamber and from local uh, local business people, and probably what Mark is talking about, that they wanted the fees to be higher. Uh, they were paying, you know, the the brick and mortar people are paying taxes. They were paying, uh, you know, stormwater fees and a whole nine yards. And so they felt that, and they watched what we were doing to make sure that those fees for the, for the vendors were actually higher. And so um, that's, I think that's how it came up with the three hundred and it's been reduced since. The other thing would be my, my kids live in Blaine, and so we travel Highway ten a lot. And these have been popping up in gas stations and uh, different sites all the way up and down that highway. And I don't know if you've been to St. Cloud lately, but we were down there Sunday. And the the mall's parking lot is just like the state fair. I mean, they are really thick in there. And uh, St. Cloud has obviously allowed them to do that. And I think one of the things is that uh, these people, they don't have anywhere to go. That's what Josh has said. But um, my wife and I are flea market people, and most of the flea markets are at county fairgrounds. They've been abolished. You can't do it. So they haven't had any place to go. And I'm sure they've got big payments on those. So they haven't had any place to go and I'm sure they've got big payments on those, on those trailers. And so there, they are, there's a little bit of an aspiration, I think, that how do, how do we try to subsidize this, uh? Uh, this summer, you know, yeah, uh, salvage something. So, so people are doing it. I mean, they're allowing it to. I, I don't have a, a problem with anything that's been said either. And I don't know if there will be any, Josh, if there'll be any pushback from local restaurant owners from the chamber, anybody like that, uh. Would we be putting a sunset on this, uh?
Good question. And there's, we could go in two directions with this. We could do something that's more, uh, based on the peacetime. Um, emergency that would sunset, you know, similar and similar to, like I said, what we did with the outdoor patios. And allow something for this year and we could prepare something for your next council meeting in that manner. That would have a sunset. But if you direct staff more as the consensus is, you know, we're not worried about a cap. And we want to just change the ordinance permanently with, you know, no cap or a cap at seven or pick a different number. Um, you, then we would be changing that permanently and the only sunset would be unless the council wanted to revisit the ordinance. And, and change it in some way or, or, you know, remove, repeal that ordinance. So, um, it's just a matter of, do you want to do something for this year? Uh, to see how it goes and, or do you want to make a permanent change? And we can come back with either. Uh, we can come back with either one, you know, with a permanent change, I don't know if we'll, we'll have to check our publishing timeframes. If we can get back to your first meeting in August, it might have to be the second meeting in August, depending on the calendar year. But, um, regardless, within a meeting or two, we could go either direction based on the council's wishes.
I, I don't have an issue with the cap, um, so. I, I think this is going to be somewhat driven by opportunity. Um, Daryl, you kind of hit it halfway that these vendors don't have a place to go with no state fair and no county fairs. But the other side of it is, you get the public that saves up. And literally goes to the state fair to eat. And they are looking for these vendors. And there's, there's actually an app out there to tell people where these state fair vendors are. So I'm not sure we're going to get those people up here, but we're definitely going to get more. I think of the regional, um, regional, um, fair and, and event. And then back to the, back to the fee, I guess I was, I was thinking more along lines like Fourth of July and arcs in the park. When you have a one day event, um, some of those fees are more than what we've been charging for the year event. Or for the whole year. So that's where I was coming from on that.
Yeah. And like I said, we did hear that from brick and mortar people. They thought we should, you know, we should put that up and it should be higher, but. I'm fine. I mean, who, who would dare say no to two spirits of many donuts? I mean, that's just. That's a walk down suicide lane there. I've already done that enough tonight, so. Any other discussion? Uh, otherwise Josh, you're looking for a motion on the first part there?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, I think we have, I, I think we have a consensus. If there's a motion to send us down a permanent ordinance change, that's, that's great. Um, uh, otherwise, I, I think we have the feedback we need to. Not sure what you want, which way you want to go with it.
Yeah, Mark.
Yeah, I would propose to make a motion to have this sunset with the, uh, COVID issue and not have a cap on it at this point. Then after this is all over, if we want to revisit the, the cap and we have the interest in it for a permanent motion, we could, we can do that at a later date.
Motion by Mark and the second by Lysio. Any, any more discussion, further discussion?
Just a point of clarification, we don't have an ordinance in front of us. The motion is to direct staff to draft one for your consideration. Is that correct?
Yes.
With that, uh, uh, motion to direct us, uh, Councilmember Cross.
Yes.
Holman?
Yes.
Lysio?
Yes.
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes. And Josh B.
Um, so given the findings that you guys just made, um, we can still move forward with the two applications on, uh, items being. Um, and, uh, excuse me, C and D here. Um, and approve those licenses or if we're going to do an exception for this year. Um, you know, we could have governed them under the, the new exception that would be coming back at the next council meeting. And, you know, I guess it's a matter of a question on how we would move forward with that. I mean, the, one of the things and the reason we put these two applications after this last item you just discussed was. Um, if we allow, say, uh, the ordinance and, and perhaps I, I, I just have a little bit of a question on the, the last motion. I, my understanding was that we're, the motion was to allow, um. An allowance for no cap for this year and to develop something for the next, uh, council meeting. Um, and I guess my question is with these two next two applications, if we go ahead and approve them. They've paid the two hundred dollar application fee, but if we're doing something more lenient for this year. Uh, I guess my concern would be equity across the board, you know, so if we get seven vendors for twenty twenty. Uh, are these two that submitted a permit going to pay two hundred dollars for the year? And then the other, uh, you know, ones that move forward after wouldn't have to. And I guess, um, so I, I leave it to the council. We could, um. The council could, uh, propose to table these applications, knowing that we'll get them approved. Um, uh, next week or, uh, and at the next meeting. Or, uh, you could go ahead and move forward with them. I guess I would just ask for the motion to address the fees. Um, and what the council's expectation would be for fairness across the board for all vendors. Um, but, um, I guess with that said, um, the item under C is a request for a mobile vending license. For OTM's gluten-free food truck. Uh, this is a request to have their food trailer located at, um, at Mills Fleet Farm. Um, in the city of Baxter and, uh, the conditions, we've done our complete review of the application. And have no concerns subject to the conditions, uh, listed in the draft motion. That I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, just from point of clarification, um. I, I guess the, the direction that I was sending in that motion or sending staff. I, I wasn't considering changing the, the fees. We've already changed the fees for the year in our fee structure. So I would, I would be of the opinion that the two hundred dollars would be for the year. For, you know, whichever, whether they, they come in now or they come in, in the future under the no cap.
For everybody would be the two hundred.
That's the way I understood it as well.
And that's how I wrote down my notes, Councilmember Cross, is that is directly the cap. Relieving the cap of the number of, of licenses that we issue in this calendar year.
Right, okay. I have no problem going ahead and approving, approving this vendor and I would think that they want to be approved tonight. So that they could continue, um, since they're already here, continue with the, uh. Um, business.
I think you're correct. Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Agreed. So where are we at? We have a motion, a second?
I'll make a motion.
Well, we do.
Second.
Second by Zach. Any further discussion? Do we want to, uh, to Connie's comment earlier about, um. Is it possible to give, uh, preferential treatment to Baxter people? Or can anybody come dragging them from Texas or whatever? You know, I don't know. Is that something worth thought?
If we move forward on what we're directing staff to do, we'll have unlimited licenses. So it will be whoever wants to come in, we get it.
Okay. All favors say, well, roll call.
Ross?
Hi.
Holman?
Yes.
Lysio?
Yes.
Abbott?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes. So did that include both them, Josh?
Um, I think I referenced C, so if we could just do I- item D quick. Um, so this one is for, um. Um, short but sweet refreshments LLC, um, to have a food trailer also in the Mills. Um, Fleet Farm retail parking lot and, um. Recommend approval of that application as well, subject to the conditions in the proposed motion.
Okay, any questions on that? Motion, motion by Mark.
Moved.
Second by Connie. Any further discussion? All favors say, excuse me, roll call, caught it.
Cross?
Hi.
Holman?
Yes.
Lysio?
Yes.
Abbott?
Yes.
And also.
Yes. Okay, I think we covered the agenda there. Uh, moving on to council comments, uh, Councilmember Lysio.
Uh, just two words have been in topic of conversation for me the last few weeks. And first is just respect. Respect for whatever's going on in your life and in our community and in the world and then compliance. Whatever the governor decides, whatever our local bodies decide, whatever businesses decide, just respecting compliance.
And thank you. Uh, Mr. Tabit?
Right, my apologies. It's getting late. I've got a longer one than usual here. Um, I wanted to bring up, um, earlier this year during the COVID, uh, the early stages of the COVID pandemic. I brought up my hope that staff would take the opportunity to, uh, innovate and leave behind the old ways of doing business. If we can find ways to do, do our business more efficiently and better using new technology. Um, I bring this up again because I believe COVID nineteen has proven that a significant investment in our technology is needed. Um, just as a note, I, I wrote some notes, but, uh, didn't plan on our meeting completely failing. Because our wifi at City Hall is not as good as. Um, just to note, mobile work capabilities, paperless office and taking of applications and payments remotely. Have all become necessary because of COVID nineteen. In order to improve our operations during this pandemic and set our city on the right course for a future in which all of us are more concerned about infectious diseases. I'm asking for the rest of the council to support me in directing staff to immediately begin researching options for tech improvements. To occur before November twentieth of twenty twenty. My first goal in sta- stating this is that we leverage technology to eliminate the need for citizens to physically come to City Hall. The first step to this is to implement online payment. As an example, I was recently able to pull a permit completely remotely except for paying. For that, I had to dig out my checkbook, write one of maybe five checks I've written all year. Drive across town and physically drop the check in the payment box. Um, we could improve customer service greatly by allowing people to pay the city from phones or computers. Um, I also believe that this pandemic has shown us we must be paperless in the office and able to work from pretty much anywhere. After we set up online portals for payment and permitting, I'd like to see the city consider technologies for things like cloud storage. Better remote work and other process improvements that eliminate the need for that physical. Um, interaction and use of so much paper in those terms. Uh, these are necessary unbudgeted improvements and they're necessary because of the pandemic. And it's shown us that we can no longer function in, in an environment requiring that kind of in-person high-touch service. Um, because of the, uh, statements I just made about how this is necessary and unbudgeted. I do believe that the expenditures for a project like this are eligible for the recent CARES Act funding that we've received. I've been in several conversations with, um, people involved at the state level as well as other county levels. Where we've talked about how this funding is possible to be used. Um, it, it appears as though that funding can be used for any necessary expenditure. That was not pre-budgeted, that came up as a necessity because of COVID nineteen. Um, so that's, that's where I'd like to start that conversation. I also think that we need as a city to come up with a plan for the eligible expenses that must be. Um, either reimbursed or spent on improvements that are necessary before November fifteenth. So having said all that, that is all just my opinion unless the rest of the council is in favor of. Trying to move some of those things forward. So with my statement tonight, I'm just asking if Mr. Mayor and the rest of the council. You would join me in supporting at least beginning this process and making an attempt toward that direction that, that I've expressed here.
Also comments or?
Your honor, council, I, I completely agree. So you've got at least two voices kind of pointing in that direction. Um, I think ultimately we need to, you know, create something on the agenda that we can take action on. Um, but for what it's worth during the comments section, I completely agree and support, uh, with, uh. And in support with what, uh, Councilmember Tabitha has called forward. Um, Daryl and others, uh, the League of Minnesota Cities has, used to have conferences. And, uh, I still remember the one where they were showing three-year-olds, uh, scanning, you know, the, the. On a notebook and, and, uh, the speaker said, will this person really want to come to a city hall for a building permit? And of course, the answer is no. Uh, we're, my opinion, um, is that we're lagging way behind on that front. And it might be a function of cost, uh, but I think without doubt, um. Uh, one quick anecdotal story, I signed up for a storage building all online, paid online. Showed up, I never saw a person. I got to the storage building, the lock was inside. You know, everything was all done remotely and there's no reason, you know, a huge percentage of what we do, you know, can't be modified or, or conducted that way. But, you know, we're always fighting. We've always done it that way. And then there are some realistic things that, you know. Um, inspections are real. You have to do inspections and things like that. So, so there are, there, there's a whole gradation of what can and cannot. But I, but I agree, we should look hard at what we can do, um, differently.
Mark?
Well, most of you know I work for the state. We've always done it that way. But this has definitely opened up, I think, everyone's eyes as to what we can do. I haven't had to be in the office to supervise twenty-five people for fourteen weeks now. And we're, we're definitely going to be seeing changes in how we do things. Which not only talks to us about our budget in regards to our technology. Which we find, uh, I have found personally that we're inadequate on a few things. Um. But it also tends to look at, uh, our expenditures towards our building and the brick and mortar. And do we need cubes for everyone? Does everyone need a physical cube? Or are there going to be more of what's called the transient cube? Where if I need to come in for the day or half a day to do something, because I have to connect my computer to the network. Uh, there's a station for me as opposed to having a personal desk there for the entire year. Which tends to then look at how we use the existing building. You know, it, it makes it look as if maybe it's, it's more advantageous to fix up what we have. As far as, um, you know, keeping it in, in good shape or doing what we typically do. And in our armories around the state where we do a batch, we come in and we, we fix the systems. As opposed to adding on or building new. So that, that saves money in the long run. So those are, you, you know, this, this has a continual wave of ramifications to it. When it comes to how, how we're going to do business in the state. And, um, and then also, you know, what that means to employees. You know, if I have a dedicated space set up at home that I'm using. For my, my true office space, you know, is, is it more than just a tax deduction? You know, I, I mean, the ramifications just keep going and going. So, you know, or is there some benefit or is there some reimbursement that comes from setting up your home office? So anyway, I agree with Zach. I I think I think that's a good first step. Having the technology in place to do this is is important, so. It's my two cents. That's probably enough for my comments for the night, too.
My comment is pretty short. I do support. Back absolutely, but I'm also a very strong believer and advocate, and you probably are as well, that the human interaction is is critical. But I can certainly see what Zach is saying and can support that.
Yeah. It's kind of a double edged sword, isn't it? You know, to Todd's comment about everything comes with a cost, but in fact, this stuff qualifies for the money that we've received. It's almost almost like a golden opportunity then to to invest those funds and and work on some of these things. The way I understand it, it's a use it or lose it scenario there. And so this is a good opportunity to. You know, because to Zach's comment that. Most of it is attributable to what what's happened here with the virus and how we've got to readjust to it. So I think it's it's justifiable. We'll find out, but. Appreciate that. Okay, who's next? Mr. Holman.
I think I've said enough, supporting the conversation so far, but I will say this, you know, it's important to kind of focus on things that. You know, maybe during these times that I don't like either. And I don't like not being able to. Come in to see my local government. You know, I don't like not being able to come to. A meeting to be heard where I can see the elected officials that I elect deliberate and discuss. I think you can do that through Zoom and any number of platforms. But I but I also recognize that, you know, because I'm I've been a participant in dozens over the last month. Where you're really marginalized as a citizen participant by not being able to see or talk to your electeds. I think not being able to have a place where they all congregate periodically, you know, is is a challenge. And and so it's easy to feel disenfranchised or marginalized, and it's easy to. Set those people aside and marginalize their participation. Our meeting is even an example of that. We have rules now. That say if you want to talk during a company meeting, you have to send in your written comment or email. Am I correct? You know. We don't have people engaging in this conversation, and I think that's something that should change. And and I view that as as a negative outcome. So I think with an eye toward efficiency, accessibility. Good things yet to come. There's still, to Connie's point, that human dimension that I think is really important, and I'm still a strong advocate for getting. Our meetings back in City Hall. To establish, you know, that that hub of local civic engagement.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. And speaking of that, one of the things that when we're not together, don't see the mailings we get. We did get a thank you card from the center. For contribution to them for in their budget. And so just wanted you to know that they sent the thank you card signed by all of the board members. Thanks for for what we've done. I'm assuming the rest of you have gotten the same emails that I've gotten over the last week about. About we're en masse and the different businesses and so on and so forth. And even and maybe not, maybe it's just me, phone calls and whatnot, but there's been some real real concern by people. But interestingly enough is that just this past week, I mean. Seems like eighty percent, ninety percent of the businesses are capitulating and going into it on their own without us getting to say anything. And then I see, you know, Cup was kind of the last one, and I seen out today that they're in there too with Super One. So the the more people do it, the less sense of loss of, you know, competition, that kind of a thing. And so. I think it's coming on strong. I saw at five o'clock before I started packing up for the for tonight that the governor is going to make an announcement. They think Wednesday, Thursday for sure. And so it it may all take care of itself here shortly. And we'll we'll stay tuned and see what happens there. But I think that. And then somebody said, well, you know, that's the big boys, you know, they're doing it. We've got all these other businesses. Well. I just went and got a haircut with a two person shop and I had to wear my mask while I was getting my haircut. So. It's trickle down. Everybody's, everybody is contributing and trying to participate too. So. Anyway. We need to, at some point, we need to decide when we think it is safe to come back into the building. Maybe not tonight, but. Okay, city administrator.
Yeah, just a follow up to Councilmember Tabitha's comments regarding the care funds. Do note that those comments made earlier about trying to be more efficient and things of that nature didn't go. Silent. We did hear that as we work through the minutia. Of the CARES Fund and the eligibility and the what can be spent. We have had conversations and are trying to get do some of the due diligence to get cost estimates so that we can have a more robust conversation as to. How this city utilizes the the care funds that it has received. So. I just want to let you know we're we're doing that and hope with the intentions that here we will have. A more robust, as I indicated, robust conversation as to how we spend that money if that's for reimbursement for PPE. To making investments into our IT infrastructure as well as the bricks and mortar of City Hall. The other thing that we are having conversations on with the other local entities is. If there is money left over, as as the mayor indicated, use it or lose it, how do we? Position ourselves because one of the eligible expenditures is to give financial assistance to local businesses or nonprofits. So we're having conversations. In that regard as well. So I just wanted to let everyone know that we are trying to find. The do's and don'ts of the funds as well as try to identify and those improvements that need to be made. Based upon our current situation with COVID to do some of the things that. As Councilmember Tabitha indicated, are not in our budget, but yet are long range goals. That directly impact how we do business, in a in a in a way, impact how we do business during this this pandemic. So. And then the only other thing is just a reminder that next Monday at five PM, we do have a special meeting. That is a closed session for my performance review. So just wanted to remind everyone Monday at five.
We need to adjourn to that?
No.
Sure. Okay, city attorney.
No report tonight.
Okay. See nothing else. It looks like we're ready to go home. Thanks for everybody's indulgent and thought processes and. Went a little late tonight, but makes up for all the nights we leave early. So. Have a good rest of the week. Look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mark. Connie. Roll call.
Ross.
Hi.
Holman.
Yes.
Licio.
Yes, please.
Abbott.
Yes.
And also.
Yes, have a good week.